I pledge allegiance to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence, please. Broko, please, Jane.
Councilor Coaster, Councilor Strata.
Here.
Councilor Shamp.
Here.
Councilor Chamberlain. Councilor Sturts.
Here.
Councilor Frye.
Here.
All members are present, we have a form.
Thank you. Pardon the prior meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Coast. Councilor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilor Coast.
Yes.
Councilor Strata.
Yes.
Councilor Shamp.
Yes.
Councilor Sturts.
Yes.
Councilor Frye.
Yes.
Six, eight, zero, names, motion carries.
Names of individual questions addressed council. I suppose April Hutz. I tried to get on the agenda, but I didn't.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if she decided afterwards. You know, I mean, after I told you what was pending.
You know what, April, let's move forward on the agenda and you can hear what the city solicitor has said and then we'll go from there, okay?
Sounds perfect.
That might answer some of your questions first.
Okay, that sounds great.
All right, and then if you have anything at the end of the meeting, then we'll go from there, okay? Thanks. All right. Let's move on with our committee reports.
Okay, Personnel and Finance Committee had a joint meeting. We were given a proposal by Chief Sluter regarding EMS staffing. And I will talk about the personnel portion of that and then John can talk about the finance portion of that. And Chief Sluter is not here, he had a call, so. This was a pretty lengthy meeting. Basically, Chief Sluter gave us a proposal that had several different components to it. And everybody, all council members, received in their packet a section of the PowerPoint that Chief Sluter presented to us. And on the, it would be page 10 of the PowerPoint in your packet, he presented the budget, which would be more of the finance section. But within that budget is also a listing of the personnel that he is requesting. The fire side of, and the EMS side of, the fire department is going to need to ramp up a little bit. We have discussed several times how the volunteer part of fire and EMS, fire side especially, is not what it used to be. And we are, Chief Sluter has talked several times with the county about some of the numbers, especially in recent years, we've doubled basically our runs for fire, for EMS. Some of the things that we see in Waseon that are increasing our runs would be Heartland of Waseon, the dialysis center, things like that, that are increasing the number of runs that we have. We are no longer going to contract out with, oh, I'm drawing a blank.
Life Star.
Life Star, thank you. So we have that money that we will roll into our own personnel, that will be hired directly through the city. The staffing, if you want to turn to the second page of the personnel, the minutes from the Personnel Finance Committee. He explained the current staffing, right now we've got one full-time fire chief and then paid on call firefighters, part-time firefighters. We don't have the Life Star anymore, we're going to have, we put that money into our own personnel for EMS. And then we do have an increase given to us by the county, for a total of $488,000 from the county. If you go back to the budget on page 10, what he would like to do is hire one full-time assistant chief, first assistant chief, a full-time second assistant chief, a full-time captain, a full-time lieutenant, a full-time parapire, and a full-time EMT for fire. All of the numbers at the bottom of this proposal, for wages and everything, the amount to be received from the county, we would have to cover about $56,000 for hiring of our own staff through the city. And one of the things that Chief Sluter has discussed is that there are some contracts out there that have not been revisited in several years, that he would like to revisit those for an increase in some income. There are other things that he has looked at for increase in revenue.
Transfers, possibly?
Transfers, mhm.
Because I know that is huge right now from coming out of our hospital.
However, we would need some equipment for that, and that's where the Finance Committee came in for that as well. So it is an investment, but like I said, we have been talking about for quite a while the need for us to hire. It's no different on the police side as it is on the fire side now, the volunteerism is down, it's down not just in fire, it's down for any volunteer organization because people just don't have the time anymore. And the requirements for fire, for training, for the required number of hours that you have to have are increasing. That's part of the issue with the decrease in volunteers as well. So Chief Sluter has proposed hiring of personnel through the city, like we have now. And with some of the things that he has proposed for the Finance Committee to take a look at, the Personnel Committee did support his proposal. He does have quite an extensive strategic plan, and all council members, I would welcome you to take a look at that, making it to a copy. But the time and amount of energy and research and connections that he has made with different people, I think this is definitely the direction the city of Waseon needs to go. So the Personnel Committee is recommending that we support Chief Sluter's proposal.
Do you want me to finish up with the finance part at this point, or do you want to?
Yes, I would like that.
That recommendation, okay. Heather stated that the personnel part of it was in essence just to get the staffing on board necessary to replace Life Star, which was already a done deal. The finance part of it is, where you mentioned the transfers, he has a plan where we can set up our own in-house EMS unit by buying our own equipment, getting our own licensing and that. And then that would generate more of a revenue stream from both emergency and non-emergency calls. But that takes an extensive capital outlay to get started, which would be amortized over time. And that's the part that we took the information home with us. Finance will be meeting again this Thursday at 3:00 to go over that aspect once again, match the expenditures with potential income.
One of the things, too, that Martin had asked last week in our committee meeting is how this would impact the relationship with the county. And Chief Sluter did say today that he had met with Dr. Hoffman, who is the medical director for county EMS. And Dr. Hoffman knows of this plan, he also works at the ER at the hospital, and he is excited that there might be some opportunity for transports, and he's very supportive of the idea, so.
So that's why Finance Committee then to go over that part of the question. The recommendation right now is just for the staffing that was necessary to replace Life Star.
Right, right.
Just to put a little leaguer gloss on it, talking to Chief Sluter, I think what council would be doing is approving this in principle. Once we get a little further down the road as we work with Clemens and Nelson, we'll be putting together, actually Rick has already done, and put together job descriptions and recommended salary amounts, but those would have to be ultimately, I think, approved by council and for the Civil Service Commission positions, those would have to be approved by civil service as well. So there'll be some work in the trenches to do once we get to that point, but this would lay the framework for how that would exist. And I think the two assistant chiefs positions are, already exist, they're just not full-time, so those in a sense are somewhat similar to what we have. The four full-time non-exempt positions are, I think, pretty much the new addition to what Rick has added. But I just, so when we get to that point where we're showing you job descriptions and talking about pay scales and stuff, that will, just so you're not surprised, we're still dealing with that issue.
Right.
After you already have, you know, visited this issue on a sort of a basic, from a basic approach.
Finance Committee, there was a little bit of discussion on the INTV at the end of that meeting?
No, just.
The budget?
Yeah, they increased their budget from, there's an additional $7,000 from each quarter that goes into our general fund. The first two quarters, we're going to give that to INTV so they can revamp their equipment, get themselves up to date, and then that budget will return back to normal after the years out.
Martin had actually asked Jamie if that was in the budget or not, and she said it was, and so it wasn't really part of it.
Yeah, it's not really set up.
I think about a year ago, we asked INTV to enter in, get in a budget to, have you received any budget report from INTV? And I know beginning of November, I said something to Mike to get that, and he adopted their finance on INTV board, and he was going to get that around. You still have not received that?
Yes.
I just feel that it would be nice that the Waseons see that budget report annually, just once a year, that we know, you know, so it's nice to know that, you know, a little bit about what's going in and out of that budget.
They've also need to work more with the city itself to do more cities' projects as well, and coordinate with our website as well, so we start getting the INTV videos directly linked to our website as well.
I know that that is, you know, they are always, always looking for people to donate. It's not a, you know, it's always in financial strains, I guess is what I want to say, but it's just nice to know that when you, when the money's going from the cities into that, from the cable, it would be nice to see how that is going out, their budget reports. And as long as I've been sitting on council, I've not once seen a budget report. And it's been requested, I think, two or three times, to at least see an annual budget report from INTV, so. And they were going to get that around. I mean, it was coming, last I heard, in November, and it's never showed up. Okay. So as it stands, the motion to accept the recommendation of the Personnel Committee to accept the proposal for EMS staffing effective 2015.
So moved.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Sturts. Is there any more discussion?
Just real quick, well, I can't look at it, it is hard to get volunteers, as we know of us. So the fire department, chili cook-off, or anything you do. Two weeks ago, I heard Liberty Center had a call, possible heart attack. Pretty soon, they'd page Delta to get extra help. They had to page Delta a second time, I'm thinking, well, glad not me laying there having a heart attack, so I can see where you got to have, you know, people there, so.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Frye?
Yes.
Councilor Shamp?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Coats?
Yes.
Six, eight, zero, names, motion carries.
Thank you. We have a tree commission.
Tree commission out on December 10th, and it was reported that we, that they had planted three memorial trees, one for Dorothy and Paul Lind at Riordan Park, one for Ray Cole at Homecoming Park, and one for Don Matthews at Little Park. We'd also talked about a grant that Kim Bowles had applied for. And it was reported also that we had finished transplanting the trees that we had got from the mall property, approximately 160 trees from that project. And also, there were some trees that were purchased through North Branch Nursery that was planted. Got it?
So what's Department heavy course?
Okay. First thing I want to bring up to your attention on the new business, the motion to accept the JAG grant, that's a JAG grant, not a JAG LE, Justice Assistance Grant. So if you can make that change so that we approve the motion for the award grant, I appreciate that. That's for just a little bit under $5,000 for our officers, as well as the other officers in the county, to be able to administer the Narcan for opiate overdoses. Working on closing out the end of year for 2014. And just a reminder for everyone with the weather coming up to slow down, keep the cars off the streets if possible, so the snowplows can get through, and get the streets cleaned out as soon as possible, we would appreciate it. And keep an eye out for the little kids that are walking to and from school, just so that you've got to give yourself a little extra distance to stop.
Tom?
We wrapped up the year with an additional 30 permits issued for the project on Glenwood and going along with what the chief had just said, to remind people that the sidewalks need to be cleared within 24 hours after two inches of snow. Keep that up, and if anybody has any questions on the year-end, that can go.
Thank you. Dennis?
Also working on closing out the end of the year, received contracts for Toledo Edison today to extend three-phase power to the Chupan River Water Tower, so that's advancing. Working on our final packet to certify the Lynnfoot Street project to ODOT, so that that can be bid coming up in the hopefully near future. And I appreciate the chief's comments about the streets and vehicles that the public works with.
Thank you, Dennis.
Can we just give a, I'm sorry, can we just give a timeline on the ODOT project again? Because I know I'm seeing a lot of people who are still wondering why we're not doing anything with Lynnfoot Street. So can we just maybe, every single council meeting, say what this timeline is for this project?
Every single council meeting.
Yeah, every single council meeting, every day.
I put something in the paper for this next week, too, on that project, too, because it was asked.
Yes, it is supposed to be, we're supposed to have our, all of our stuff finalized into them mid-February. And they wave their magic wands after they review the bid packet that we submit, they advertise it, it will be let, hopefully at the spring, if it's awarded. But work isn't expected to begin until probably the fourth quarter of this year. And they'll do the underground work through next winter, and the stuff you can see after, during the spring of 2016. Then we'll be hopefully walking it sometime next spring or early summer.
So you see the underground going, starting in the fall of this year, correct?
Probably late fall.
Anything else for Dennis? Okay, Jane.
I apologize that you did not receive email check subs. CMI is still working on getting that hooked up with our software, so hopefully next paycheck, they will not be super. I also have completed year-end, everything completed today, all of our reports saved, so we maintained our budget for 2014 pretty well. I provided income tax revenue figures to you, so we were 1.42% above what we took in in 2013, and hopefully we can move through that for 2015 as well.
Tom?
Well, I think I'll take my time to address an issue with respect to one ordinance that's on our agenda and then one that's not. The one that's on the agenda that I'd like to say something about is 2014-17, which is the ordinance amending 2006-25, which revises the pay scale for members of council, the city of Waseon. As council is aware, traditionally councils receive two forms of payment, I think, one is a base salary, and then also a per-meeting payment, depending on the number of meetings attended. And this ordinance, as council knows, is addressed not at adjusting the base salary amount, but just increasing by a small amount the amount council has paid for attending meetings. It's come to my attention recently, and I think Heather has confirmed this as well, that the folks in Columbus are now starting to assert the position that compensation for committee meetings is not pensionable. They consider it some sort of bonus or something different than salary. The village of Archibald is, my understanding from talking to Mark Higgins, the village solicitor, is that they've tried a number of approaches to convince the folks in Columbus otherwise, but to no avail. And what Archibald has done, and again, I can confirm this with Heather, we had a direct conversation with the folks there, is to address that issue by simply eliminating the per-meeting salary amount, the compensation, and sort of transferring that to just the base salary. I think my understanding is the way they did that was just to take a running average of the last five years or so, how many meetings they had, multiply that times the meeting salary amount, and then adding that on to the base salary. So their compensation now, as I understand it, consists just in the base salary amount. So I wanted to bring that to council's attention and for its consideration, possibly whether to consider whether we'd want to table, move to table this ordinance, to consider perhaps looking at a strategy that Archibald has adopted, or whether there's some other way to accommodate that. I mean, I think it's, you know, from most people's vantage point, it's fair that council receives PERS for the committee time as well as the salary, there's not really a reasoned basis for making that distinction. One problem is that we're running up against the March 1st deadline for making any changes, any changes to that original ordinance, 2006-25, have to be in place by March 1st, which means council would have to have passed something by, I think, talking to Meg, we agree that January 28th would be the deadline for that. So if, for example, council wanted to table this ordinance for tonight in order to consider this issue, it could have, it could have an amendment in place for the next meeting, which would be a second reading, and then hold a special council meeting for a third reading if it passed on second reading. I'm just laying out the options for council. I wanted to bring that to council's attention, especially Heather and I had a conversation about this just earlier today, and I apologize for the delay, but the information has just sort of been made available to us. Heather, I don't know if you want to add anything to that? We both, I've spoken to Mark Higgins directly, the village solicitor, and I think Heather, you spoke to someone in the administration at Archibald and confirmed the same thing.
Right. So regardless, I mean, I think we need to, we need to make that change to the lump sum versus the per-meeting, so, and the sooner the better, because PERS is taking a look at that.
I mean, that's the only thing that actually affects with the PERS, right?
Correct.
Now, I mean, I will say that this has been a new thing that the folks in Columbus have been pursuing, so we have not had any direct contact from them that I'm aware of indicating that they're not going to let us do that. But, you know, it's kind of like walking down the blind alley, a black dark alley, waiting for someone to tap you on the shoulder, you know, you never know when. I mean, it could be two years, it could be tomorrow that we'll get that call, and we'll have, you know, we'd have to deal with that issue.
I talked to, after that phone call, I talked to Delta, the Finance, no, I'm sorry, Delta, Napoleon, Swan, and they're all doing it the same way that Archibald's doing it. So I think the sooner we get on board with that, the better off we'll be. I'm okay to table it.
We're not there yet, are we?
No.
He's filling his.
Yeah, we can discuss that when we get to the, you just wanted to let you know that that issue exists, and you guys can handle that how you want to when you get to that ordinance. Okay, and I'm happy to answer further questions then, if you'd like. The other ordinance that's not on the books, or on the books, on the agenda, is the, what would have been the third reading on the amendment to the vicious dog ordinance. And as I've explained to council, I think that when the vote, so there were two motions up for consideration. One was to amend the vicious dog ordinance, amend the ordinance, amending the vicious dog ordinance, to include the proper language. As council, remember, I inadvertently left off the language necessary to delete pitbull as being, by virtue of the breed alone, a vicious dog. And so it's necessary to amend the ordinance to include that proper language. And then there was also on the agenda a motion to approve on second reading the amended version. As council will recall, what was actually voted on was the, not the amendment, but the original, the original ordinance on second reading. And the vote on that motion was three in favor, two against, and one abstention. And we incorrectly indicated during the meeting that that was sufficient for passage, and on further review and reflection and looking at the code and the charter, we determined that that was not sufficient to pass on second reading. And so the reading on, the second reading therefore failed. And so that's the reason it's not before council this evening as a, on a third reading. Having said that, my understanding is, and I'll let Kathy and Heather appropriate reflect on this, is that nothing has changed in terms of the approach, that is, to have folks sit down and take a comprehensive look at the ordinance and include as part, probably, I'm not sure what council's thinking, but including as part of a revision to the ordinance, the deletion of pitfalls, but maybe also some other revisions to the ordinance. And that will just entail the folks sitting down. And my understanding was that there was discussion of tabling the motion, but that was rejected, and the thought was to use the time between the second and third reading for folks to sit down and discuss the issue. This, in essence, really. This, in essence, really provides a little bit more breathing room to do that, since there's no longer a, an official ordinance before council. So that's just a, you know, just so everyone's on the same page, understands why it's not on the agenda this evening.
So the discussion can still move forward?
Sure.
As, by re-table?
That's right. And then what we, what would be presented to council would be a similar ordinance revising the code, but just with whatever additional revisions council might determine as appropriate.
So anything we vote on, majority takes more than one person? I mean, I was taught in school that majority takes one, but, so in other words, it takes more than one, is that correct?
Well, majority of council would be four. It took, it was necessary to have four votes. And I think the, the sticking point was that the abstention was considered a vote for the majority, which I think is improper, is incorrect. It's counted as simply an empty ballot.
And that doesn't be counted as a tie vote? It would go to the mayor?
No, because it was three favor, three in favor, two against, and one, nothing. If it was three-three, then it would have gone to the mayor. Yeah, yeah. Right.
Does that answer your question?
Not completely, I guess. More than I have a question as far as how does that affect me now?
It's still going for discussion?
So the law is currently the same? There's nothing that's changed as far as that?
There's no third reading tonight, no. It's still going for discussion on?
And will that be considered another first reading, then, for the discussion?
If, once they come back and move it forward, it'll probably have to go to first reading, yes.
Okay, so another motion will have to be made, then, for that?
It, depending on what they bring forward. Yes, yes, it will.
I'm not registering. I'm making that perfectly clear. I was the only one made to do this. I do not intend to register. My dogs are registered through the county.
That, that will take up with the, if you're not going to register, you take that up with him.
That's fine.
Okay.
I registered through the county, through my tags, how I'm supposed to, and that's all the further that will go.
Is this going back to the original committee that brought it to?
I think the way we left it is, I said it with the chief and with the committee, and who else was on there that you stated?
It was the dog, and?
Yeah, the dog ordinance and representative from Henry County, yeah. So, hopefully, chief and that committee can get the wording in place and bring it back forward.
Again, let me clarify, there is no wording. It is a removal of wording. What the Safety and Code originally recommended is a removal, not an addition, is simply a removal. And one line that says, "Refer to Ohio Revised Code section," and I can't remember the number. So this talk about bringing forth wording, there is no wording to bring forth from the committee, it is a removal of wording.
I think it's the vicious dog wording, Shane, is what they're talking about.
Yeah, that.
I mean, you're, you're asking to remove the word pit bull.
No.
And I think that if they're going to, if they're going to attack this, I think is what they want to do, is to, if you're going to attack this whole code, you want to make sure that the vicious dog is put in place, too. Because we don't want to come back and take pit bull out and then go back and say, okay, now how are we going to attack the vicious dog code?
No, there would.
And so that's why this has to be put in place altogether.
There would be no going back, it'd be simply referring to the Ohio Revised Code. So we would simply refer to any changes made at the state level as what we would adopt. So there would be no going back for us, we would just simply adopt if the state sends forward.
Well, Shane, I'll put it real simply. I'm going to bring something to Safety and Code, asking for a change in the ordinance.
Yeah. We're going to revisit the issue.
And we'll revisit the issue, and whatever Safety and Code feels is just will be brought in front of council.
Exactly. That's why, we're going to go back to square one on the issue.
Right. Because this one failed, we need to revisit it and go back and see if we can come up with something that Safety and Code works with and that is comparable with the council's beliefs.
Well, why did this one fail? Was it just simply because there was a wording issue, like within, like it didn't, because the second time we voted, it was because we had an abstain? Is that the reason it failed?
It failed because there wasn't a majority.
So because we had a three-two-one is why it is?
I mean, you could have had a four, you could have had a four-one abstention. So it's not really the abstention, it's the failure to have a majority vote approving it.
Okay.
And it wasn't, didn't have anything to do with what was in or not in the statute, I mean, or the ordinance. The fact that you guys moved on the unamended version is irrelevant, really, the dispositive issues, that it just wasn't a majority approving what you voted on.
I have a question. What is it, the wording that they're trying to do? If you're trying to, if it says that you're going to the Ohio State Code, and then it has a number, then it has a comma, then it has the addition that they had done before where it says, "We are going to include pit bull, pit bull, live, shaftsired terriers," and listed a whole bunch of different breeds that it called out specifically. It didn't do anything other than label them vicious. It didn't describe what a vicious dog is. The Ohio State Code did that. So the Ohio State Code alone describes what is considered a vicious dog. The only thing that we did is we attached breeds that are vicious from day one. They're born, they're considered vicious. I, I don't understand what other language they're trying to add to it. If, and we're going to come up with some different language to add to the state code, do you want to have the same law and just word it different? Or what other thing can you do besides say, "A vicious dog is a vicious dog, period, according to state code, and we are no longer going to discriminate against any certain breed?" That seems simple. I guess my grandpa always taught me that, when you're trying to figure something out, use the KISS method. Keep it simple, stupid. Like, there, there's no sense in trying to figure out something that's already done, figured out. They've already described what a vicious dog is. Doesn't matter if it's a Chihuahua, a Rottweiler, or what it is. A vicious dog is a vicious dog, not out of being born. That dog is vicious. It's not because it grabs a toy and shakes really hard. Every dog I've ever met does that kind of stuff. It's not in their DNA. I mean, I'm not a geneticist, but it's, a dog is a dog. There's good dogs, there's bad dogs. There's ones that are vicious.
We heard all of this two weeks ago. We heard, we've been hearing?
But it sounds like you're confused.
No, we're not confused. We're not confused on what vicious dog is and, and how you can identify what a vicious dog is, or what, how to identify what breed a dog is. We've heard all the information, we've gotten all the information, we have been called, we've gone through everything that has been introduced to us. The thing is, when the state gives you a law, and you try to abide by that law, which we did, and then we kept that law, and then the state depletes a certain aspect of that law, and we are trying to work, we are trying to work what is for the best interest of our city and our citizens and our safety of our citizens, and we're trying to do the best thing that we can do, that is why we are revisiting it. And really, we, we are not confused on this matter, sir. What we are trying to do is for the best interest of the safety and the health and the welfare of all of our citizens in Waseon, Ohio. That's what we're trying to do. And by doing that, we are revisiting this issue again. And I feel that Mr. McWaters gave justifiable reason as to why we are going back at this. So that's, that's all we can say on the matter tonight. Hopefully, we can come back with wording as I see it, as when we talk about vicious, when we talk about taking out pit bull, when we're talking about abstaining. There's been a lot of action on this issue by everybody on this council, and through our police department and our, our law office. So hopefully, we can come up with a good answer that is going to work for everybody within the city. So.
You have a question?
I think we're going to, I think we're going to move on so we can get through the agenda on this, okay? All right. We have nothing under first reading. So, second reading of legislation, amended ordinance. I guess?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we table ordinance 2014-17.
Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Coast. Is there any discussion? Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, ordinance 2014-17 is tabled.
Thank you. Second reading on ordinance 2014-18, amending ordinance 2006-25, establishing the pay scale for the mayor of the city of Waseon.
Second reading.
Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Coast and second by Councilor Fry. Is there any discussion? Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
No.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
No.
Four yeas, two nays, motion, ordinance 2014-18 passes on second reading.
Can I just ask a question of, of Council Chamberlain and Strata votes? You have the right to vote any way you want, but this is about the position of a person in a position, and we did have some discussion on that, we had some late discussion. What other information, or can I ask why you voted no?
I thought the percentage wasn't quite great for what we decided for the, for the council's position. It went up by, I believe it was about seven percent.
Do you know what the mayor of Archibald makes?
No, I don't.
Fifteen-five, part-time. There's also, the mayor of Archibald also has an administrator in place. Same thing with the mayor of Delta.
Are we going to be berated about how we voted?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
No, but the comparison is, I mean, I think we're comparing apples to apples here, and I think it is a fair, a fair wage, a fair increase. And I think we need to keep that in mind when we're looking at the position, the position of council, the position of mayor. It's not about berating, it's about making sure that we have all the information. And I know, Councilor Strata, you voted no for the council position as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we had discussion about that, so I was going to ask you about that as well.
No, abstain from the last one.
Right, right, you abstained for council as well.
This one we would have voted on.
So I just wanted to make sure that we had all the information that you needed, because I know that we had a discussion about that, too, that you didn't feel that you had as much information that you wanted, so.
Yeah, we never talked about it as a group, as sitting down, so that's how I voted.
Thank you. It wasn't meant to berate, Shane, I just had a question.
Well, I've been on council for seven years, and I don't think I've ever been asked why I voted one way or the other. I don't think, during a council meeting, I've never been asked why I voted one way or another. In seven.
I had a question, and I wanted to ask it.
Well.
And it's simply because we had questions about?
I'll answer it. The reason why I voted no, and I would have voted no on the city council pay rate as well, is because the majority of our decision-makers right now are appointed, not elected.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it would be more prudent if the, if these types of pay decisions were made by a body that was represented mostly by elected officials rather than appointed officials.
But you do have to remember, too, you can't get these, why you're, like, we don't know who's going to be mayor in this year.
I know. But, but the mayor, but.
The mayor's the guy who'll go up for reelection. Okay, we, you know, was appointed, so that pay increase, so, you know, that'll start until whoever gets this next year.
I've wrestled with how much this body should do. Ever, you know, I wrestle with that because we don't, as a majority, represent the people. We, the majority of our decision-makers here, four to three, have been appointed. So I'm always wrestling with how much we should be doing. So that's just something I continue to wrestle with, and in this particular scenario here, I just side with, hold off until our majority turns into an elected majority rather than an appointed majority, and then we can make decisions like this. That's just my personal belief.
Can you explain appointed?
Yeah. You're appointed, John's appointed, Martin's appointed, and Jeff's appointed.
My position as mayor is appointed?
Yes.
I was elected three times on council by the city of Waseon.
I know, so all, there's four of you that are appointed and three that are elected. So the majority of our decision-making body is appointed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was elected three times by the city of Waseon.
You said that once before, would you like to pat on the back?
Yes. Okay, so, no, what I'm saying, Shane, is what you're stating makes no sense.
It does make sense.
You're appointed as mayor.
You're appointed to the mayor. If you weren't appointed the mayor, that wouldn't open up a seat for John. Okay? So if you, if you want to return as a council member, come on over.
Well, that, that's, okay, and that was the question I had.
Drop it, drop it. That was just a question I had, because when we talked in committee of the whole, that wasn't brought up. And I, you know, I know that I neglected to bring some information to you guys, so I wanted to make sure that I had all the information that you needed, and that was presented, and that was, that was not brought up in committee of the whole. So that was my question.
So the next elected official who runs for mayor, and they get elected in November of 2015, will be worthy of a raise, not in 2016, but would be worthy of a raise two years later.
Kathy, I know you're, I know you're confident you'll win the election, and I know you want a pay raise, you just have to.
I will not discuss any type of that.
I think we need to keep in mind that the elected officials are elected by the people to do a job.
Exactly.
And I'm thinking of other people who possibly could run, Shane. Other people who would want to run.
Your term, if you win election, Kathy, would be a four-year term, you'd benefit from two years of the pay raise.
Third reading.
Okay?
Yes.
All right?
Moving on.
Two years would be better, none.
Moving on. Let's go to third reading. Wow.
Wow's right.
Proble of Solid Justic Waste Management Plan Update.
Third reading. Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Sturts and second by Councilor Coast. Is there any discussion? Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2014-24 passes on third reading and will be effective in thirty days.
Thank you. Okay. Under new business, motion to accept the JAG grant, Justice Assistance Grant law.
Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Coast. Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Council, I appreciate it, at least let me get the reading out before you would act on it. Second, under new business, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, I would like a motion to accept all of the appointments to the various boards. I'm going to read the people, and we could just make a motion for all of these boards in person. For the zoning board of appeals, it'd be Michael Prisman for a five-year term. For charter review commission, Jeff Steretz and John Schamp for a one-year term. For the community reinvestment area housing council, Heather Coast and Rick Fry. For the tax incentive review council, it'd be John Schamp. For the tree commission, three-year term, will be Rick Fry and Jeff Laco. For the Pride preservation and design review board, three-year term, will be Bev Meridoo and Martine Estrada. For the planning commission, Rebecca Martinez, she will be filling in the unexpired term of Ryan Grim, and Doug Ballmer for a six-year term.
And make a motion to accept, second. Is that all right? Yeah, there is no more, so. Make a motion to accept the appointments to the various boards and commissions.
Second.
Motion moved by Councilor Chamberlain and second by Councilor Strata. Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Coast?
Yes.
Councilor Schamp?
Yes.
Councilor Sturts?
Yes.